Meeting on a motion by Mr. Slodren, second by Ms. Buchanan. Mr. Wagner, will you pull the board?
Do you certify in closed session, we discuss public business matters lawfully intended and identified in your motion going closed session. Mr. Zay.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Mark.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Roy.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Schlau.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Adams.
Yes, sir. Ms. Buchanan, I believe that you have a county want to form for the board's consideration.
Yes, sir. I move that the board reappoint Mike Ward to the Roanoke River Basin Association for a one-year term that will expire August of the 31st, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? It's six-zero. Jennifer, there you are. Mr. Hall, are there any other items prior to the 6:00 PM session that we need to discuss?
Not that I'm aware of.
Board members, do you have any? If not, we will declare the 3:00 PM session closed. We will move right into the 6:00 PM session. Briefly, I'll welcome everyone here. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. If you wish to be placed specifically at any of our meetings on the agenda, you'll need to contact the county administrator's office at least seven days in advance of any meeting prior to being placed on the agenda. However, each of our meetings that are regular board scheduled meetings do allow matters presented by the public, and we will take that up tonight after our public hearings. Again, welcome, everyone. Our first item of consideration tonight is a public hearing on a rezoning application, R-20-04, Charles D. Hodge. We have with us our Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Lee Clark. Mr. Clark?
Okay, this property is located at 86 Friendship Drive. It's in a BlackBerry district. Tax number is 13.864. The applicant here is requesting the rezoning of just over six tenths of an acre from mixed residential district to rural residential district. The applicant intends to replace the site-built home that's on the property with a single wade manufactured home. Following a public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended this rezoning request be approved.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clark. I will open the public hearing at 6:06 to take input. Is there anyone wishing to address the board in this public hearing concerning this zoning, rezoning application? Seeing no hands or anyone, I will close the public hearing at 6:06 PM. This is in my district. I have looked at it, and it is not unlike what you would see similar around the properties. There are single wides, there are some double wides, there's older homes, there are some that probably have not gone too far beyond their usefulness. But with this application, I will concur with the staff and planning commission if someone will make this motion on my behalf.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the rezoning request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? It's six-zero. Jennifer, Agenda Item 16 is a public hearing for a proposed amendment to the FY 2021 school and total county budget. Mr. Hall.
The school board has received $2,098,231.94 in CARES Act funding for elementary and secondary schools. The school board has indicated it will use the funds to support essential instructional and maintenance supplies and personnel costs over the next two years. The board supervisors must hold a public hearing in order to amend the FY 2021 budget and appropriate these funds. Whenever a budget is altered by more than 1% of the total budget, a public hearing is required. Following the public hearing, staff will ask the board to approve an appropriation equal to that amount to the schools. The public hearing has been appropriately advertised and scheduled for tonight's 6:00 PM portion of this meeting.
I'll open the public hearing at 6:08 PM to take input on this item. Is there anyone wishing to address the board? Seeing no hands, I will close the public hearing at 6:08. What is the pleasure of the board in regard to this amendment to the FY 2021 school budget and total county budget?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we amend the FY 2021 budget and appropriate $2,098,231.94.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six-zero. Jennifer, Agenda Item 17, a public hearing for proposed changes to county procurement ordinance. Mr. Hall.
At the board's June 23rd meeting, the county administrator discussed the need to modify the county procurement ordinance to better align it with the procurement act of the code of Virginia. Before the county ordinance can be changed, the board must hold a public hearing on the topic, and that public hearing has been properly advertised and is scheduled for the 6:00 PM meeting.
I will open the public hearing to take input on this at 6:09 PM. Is there anyone wishing to address the board on this matter? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing at 6:09 PM. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the proposed changes to the county ordinance regarding procurement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? It's six-zero. Jennifer, at this time, we'll offer Agenda Item 18, matters presented by the public. Is there anyone wishing to address the board on any subject at this time? Seeing no hands, we will move on, and we need to contact those upstairs with a little bit of background, Mr. Hall.
One item to add to the agenda that we just became aware of during closed session. Did we just do the proper time to do that?
Yes, sir.
It's nothing of real earth-shattering, but it's a JAG grant that the sheriff's office has obtained of approximately $13,797, which they would use for law enforcement needs. As you know from previous JAG grants, they require a 30-day public comment period prior to any action on accepting or appropriating the grant. So the sheriff's office has asked that the board vote to begin the 30-day comment period today, and it will expire by the time of your September meeting, and at that point you'll be asked to take action on the grant. JAG grants are different. They require a comment period as opposed to any other.
Okay. With that, what is the pleasure of the board in regard to the 30-day comment period beginning today in regards to the JAG grant for the sheriff's office?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or clarification needed?
No.
All in favor? It's six-zero. Jennifer, we're going to take about a three-minute recess while we let those with cameras set up, microphones, and we'll have a presentation, Agenda Item Number 19, presentation regarding Going to see the same screen as being shown on camera and the public. We have with us Jeremy Carroll and Ann Schauer. And both of you, please, for the benefit of the microphone here, a little bit better than me pronouncing from here, introduce yourselves again when you start your presentation.
Is it okay to take my mask off, Mr. Chairman?
As long as you're a little bit of distance away from sometimes.
You okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to speak about Martinsville's proposed reversion with an overview and a financial analysis of it. Again, my name is Jeremy Carroll with the firm of Gwynn Waddell, Carroll &amp; Lockaby in Salem. I'm here with Ann Schauer, who's our local government finance expert, who will be providing some financial analysis for us. I'm going to begin our discussion with a brief overview of reversion, both the process or the process and issues and impacts. There are several issues that are relevant to reversion I want to at least touch on with you, and then touch on some of the impacts we anticipate from reversion. Then I'm going to turn the presentation over to Ms. Schauer, and she's going to discuss some demographics associated with the city of Martinsville, the city's current financial condition, and she's also going to talk about the impacts on Henry County. She's going to do a little bit more of a deep dive into the numbers relative to the Beginning with the overview, what is reversion? Reversion is a partial consolidation of the city and the county. The city will no longer be an independent city as it stands today. It will become a part of the county. The town residents will become county residents. The county will assume responsibility for some of the services that are going to be provided within town limits. The county will derive some revenues, particularly property tax revenues, from town residents. The town residents will gain a voice on this body. Town residents will gain representation either through the addition of a new seat on this board or the rearranging of electoral districts so that they obtain representation. So that's what reversion is. What's the process for reversion? Reversion begins with the city. The city has made that decision. They made that decision late last year that they were going to proceed with the process. The next step in that process is for the city to file a petition with the Commission on Local Government. Once they file that petition, that will start the, it is litigation at that time. The county will be a necessary party in that litigation and will participate in that litigation. We will file a response to the city's petition. The city's report must discuss the impact reversion will have on the city, the county, and the public school system. We will respond on those issues. Part of what you'll hear today are some elements of that response, but obviously not everything yet because we don't have that petition yet. The Commission on Local Government will hold an evidentiary hearing, and they will issue a report and recommendation based on the evidence presented to them. But that's just the first step of the process. The second step is a three-judge panel. The Virginia Supreme Court will appoint a three-judge panel who will receive the Commission on Local Government report. It is admissible to the three-judge panel, but not binding on the three-judge panel. The court will then also take evidence from the city and the county and perhaps other interested parties, and the three-judge panel will have the ability to enter an order denying reversion, permitting reversion, and if it permits reversion, establishing certain terms and conditions to govern reversion. The city would then have, after the entry of that order, the city would have 21 days if they decided to opt out of reversion at that point. That three-judge panel will remain in place for 10 years to oversee the reversion process and the implementation of reversion. It's important to note that while the filing of the petition with the Commission on Local Government starts the litigation process, the city and county can sit down at any point in that process and engage in mediation or negotiated settlement. And to that end, both sides have expressed some interest in doing that. Any settlement, however, would have to be approved by the Commission on Local Government. Want to give a little bit about what the Virginia Code and the Virginia Administrative Code dictate concerning the issues and the matters of proof, the standard, if you will, that must be applied to reversion. First of all, the city proposing to revert has a population of less than 50,000. Well, that, they meet that criteria. And then they must make all the adjoining counties, in this case, there's only one, parties to the litigation. They will certainly do that. Then what the Commission on Local Government will look to see based on the evidence submitted by the city and the county are whether reversion will substantially impair the county's ability to meet the service needs of its population, whether reversion will result in substantially inequitable sharing of resources and liabilities, and whether reversion is truly in the best interests of the city, the county, the Commonwealth, and the citizens of the city and county. The Commonwealth also has an interest in promoting strong and viable local governments, and the court and the Commission on Local Government will review the evidence to see if that standard is met as well. In ruling on reversion, it's not necessarily a yes or no, an up or down from the judges. They can impose terms and conditions which will facilitate the reversion process. Those terms and conditions will ensure an orderly transition from city-to-town status, adjust financial inequities that may arise from the reversion, balance the equities between the parties, and ensure, again, the protection of those best interests of the city, the county, and their residents. What are some of the issues that are relevant to reversion? I've talked about some of the standards that have to be proven, but the Virginia Administrative Code, which governs the Commission on Local Government, sets forth a number of criteria that must be analyzed at a fairly granular level with respect to reversion. Again, they're looking to see writ large the impact on the county, the impact on the city, the impact on the public schools. In addition, however, what they're going to really focus down on are what are the population trends of the localities? Is the population increasing? Is it decreasing? Is it holding steady? What are the trends with regard to student-age population? Again, increasing, decreasing, holding steady? What's the cost of education in each of the jurisdictions per pupil? What are the trends with regards to assessed value of property? Because that's where we get most of our revenue to pay for the services that may be transitioned from the city to the county. What are the tax rates? And what are the revenue collections for the various jurisdictions? As I mentioned, a petition will have to be filed, or pleading will have to be filed by the city. When that is filed, the city will make some assertions as to services that they propose to transfer to the county, services that they would want the county to take over in the town. They'll also have to provide information regarding the related cost of those services. They'll have to provide information concerning services that the town will retain. This is, again, the kind of information that the Commission on Local Government is going to consider as it evaluates the reversion, the proposed reversion. Likewise, there will be consideration of what property and associated debt, if any, the city proposes to transfer to the county. There will be an analysis of the respective indebtedness of the two localities, and what revenues the county may collect from the town residents and town businesses post-reversion. They won't only look at historical information, though. They're going to be expecting the city and the county to come forward with estimates of net aggregate fiscal impact to the two localities over the ensuing five years. So that's financial information, financial forecasting, that we will be providing to the Commission on Local Government. So this is to give you an overview of what those issues are, what kind of data is going to be considered by the Commission on Local Government as they consider reversion. And that applies no matter who's reporting. That's not specific to Martinsville, specific to Henry County. But let's take a look at the specifics of our situation. Why is the city considering reversion? And they've said as much, that they do not feel that they can maintain their current level of services, at their current service levels, given their current revenues and projected future revenues. They either have an unwillingness or an inability to increase taxes or to reduce those services. They routinely use their fund balance to balance their budget. And candidly, I think they just, they intend to, and this is the reversion process, to shift services and expenditures from the city to the county, put the county in, make the county responsible for some of those services, such as schools, as we'll discuss. And lastly, we, you know, the city is certainly, once the city becomes a town, the current city has a moratorium on annexation, so once it becomes a town, annexation may be something that they would pursue, and that may be another justification for reversion. So what are some of the services? We talked about the services that may transition to the county. What are some of those services? Public education, the schools. The city of Martinsville's school division goes away and becomes part of the Henry County School Division. Constitutional officers and their offices and employees, sheriff, commissioner of revenue, treasurer, clerk of the court, because indeed the court system likewise would almost certainly go away. Jail, now that's related, obviously, to the sheriff, but the jail services in the city would expire and transition over to the county. Social services, health and mental health services, and the registrar and electoral board are other services that would transition from the city to the county. Will the, what services will the town likely retain? Again, I say likely because we haven't seen their proposal, but almost certainly, based on the information we've seen thus far, they will retain police fire, EMS, public works, street maintenance, parks and recreation, building code enforcement, solid waste collection, and recycling. Now, I say that, I do want to point out that two of those in particular, parks and recreation and solid waste, are areas where town residents, city residents currently, once they become town residents, would be able to use county resources and county services, so there would be a likely increase in county expenditures there. It's hard to quantify that at this point, but that is what we would anticipate, an increased expenditure in those departments. With the services do come some increased revenues for the county. What revenues will we be receiving? The big-ticket items are city residents who become town residents will suddenly be paying property taxes and personal property taxes to the county. There also will be comp board funding. Those of you who work with constitutional officers will be aware that much of the funding for those salaries and benefits comes from the comp board, though they are indeed supplemented by the local governments. That funding would transition from the city to the county. And then there would be an increase in sales and use tax collections for the county based on the, based on the calculation that is used to divvy up sales tax collections between towns and their surrounding counties. The problem is, from the county's perspective, when you net out the expenses associated with the new services and revenues that we will be deriving from the city, the increased revenues will not be sufficient to pay for the increased services. Even the city's estimates put it at a $1.9 million deficit for the county and suggest that the county will be required to raise taxes by five cents, real estate taxes, by five cents, from 55 cents to 60 cents. The county views that as a best-case scenario based on the city's methodology. The county believes that the impact is going to be greater, that there are additional expenses, such as those parks and recreation and solid waste expenses I mentioned just a moment ago, that are not taken into account in the city's analysis. There are additional one-time expenses that are not taken into account in the city's analysis, particularly onboarding expenses for new employees, expenses associated with new property coming into the county's possession. That will drive up that number closer to $3 million and a tax increase closer to 10 cents off the real estate tax. The county will, at the end of the day, be forced to either raise taxes, cut services, or eliminate positions in an effort to bridge that gap. The county's going to have to make the tough choices that are, the city is not making to drive this reversion bus, if you will. With regard to the negative impacts, one, a couple of particular issues I'll comment on before turning it over to Ms. Schauer. Annexation is not part of this process, but like I said, the moratorium on annexation is eliminated, and within two years of reversion, the town could pursue annexation. And undoubtedly, they would target the more tax-rich areas around the city in an effort to increase their tax base. And there are certain taxes, consumer's utility tax, meals tax, lodging tax, bank franchise tax, and BPO tax, that would be lost to the county in those areas. So annexation following shortly after reversion would be a second hit to the county's fiscal condition. I mentioned earlier about buildings. We don't know yet which buildings the city is going to propose to transfer to the county. Obviously, there could be a need for some of the school buildings. There could be need for other buildings that the city currently uses but will no longer need. There are buildings that I believe are shared in ownership between the city and the county that will have to be resolved. And there could be debt associated with those counties and with those buildings, and indeed, I know some of them do have debt on them. And so those are issues that will have to be resolved and could add to the cost of reversion from the county's perspective and add another negative impact to the county. And once we take on those buildings, what are the conditions of those buildings, and what type of maintenance or upkeep or upgrades will be needed for those, for those properties? And I mention upgrades to the properties because undoubtedly, the county will be taking on new employees as a result of reversion. We've talked about the constitutional officers and the courts. Those will be terminated at the city, and some of those employees, certainly not all of them, but some of them would come over to the county because the county would now have to be providing services to a larger service area. And so we've got to have a place to put those people, whether the buildings that we currently have or... have or that we'll be obtaining, if any, are sufficient, as you have to be determined, but there will certainly be costs in upfitting those buildings so that they can handle the new, the new staff. We'll also have to engage in salary and benefit equalization. City and county staff are not necessarily paid at the same rates, school, constitutional officers, social services, could be an issue of, some could be paid more at a different pay grade or pay scale than others, that that will have to be evened out, benefits as well. So that could be a hidden cost to the county. And the, the county will also, in its kind of back office setting, by bringing on new employees and bringing on new services, they may need new HR employees, IT employees, purchasing procurement employees. So there are costs that the county anticipates that are not necessarily reflected in the city's methodology in assessing costs and impact to the county. This slide addresses some of those same issues, the solid waste and parks and recreation I've referred to already, the process of consolidating operations, coming up with physical locations for everybody, making sure everybody has the computers they need, the supplies they need, the materials they need to perform their services. Some of that may come over from the city, that's certainly a possibility, but will it be sufficient? Will it be adequate? Will it, will it work in our, in the county's system? One-time capital outlets, when you bring on new employees, they're just going to be an expense. When you bring on new property, when you insure those properties, there's going to be expenses, just those one-time expenses when you bring them on, that are going to have, again, that negative impact on the county's bottom line. And another set of issues, as I mentioned, election districts, that's something that will have to be addressed by the county moving forward. How will we divvy up the city into the board supervisors? There are regional organizations and regional agreements between the city and the county that will have to be addressed, the 911, library, economic development, revenue sharing agreements for Patriot Center and other industrial parks. I did want to briefly mention, there have been three other reversions in the Commonwealth. And they've followed three different models. South Boston was contentious from beginning to end, including an appeal to the Virginia Supreme Court, which really kind of defined the parameters of what that three-judge panel can do in imposing terms and conditions on the, on the reversion order when it is entered. But it was very contentious, and there were hard feelings long after the reversion was concluded. Clifton Forge was another model. It began as litigation, but while the matter was progressing through the litigation track, the parties got together and worked out a voluntary agreement. And then Bedford is the most amicable model, never really was terribly adversarial, it was hardly negotiated, I'm sure, but at the end of the day, they reached a voluntary settlement agreement and presented a joint agreement to the Commission on Local Government. So three models, and as I mentioned earlier, both the city and the county have expressed a willingness to at least sit down and talk, so hopefully, there will be some progress on that, on that line. Those negotiated settlements have addressed all of the issues that seem to be key to the city and the county, in this case, issues of annexation, issues of the disposition of property and related debt, issues of services and related costs, and how to handle joint agreements and revenue sharing agreements. So there are, there are models out there that the county and the city will be able to look to and use as a baseline as we move forward. And, and, you know, there are, while the reversion process is started, that's not the only way of bridging the gap between the city and the county. Other possibilities would be simply school consolidation or consolidation of constitutional officers and courts. That could be short of, short of a full-blown reversion from city-to-town status, revisiting some of those revenue-sharing agreements or boundary adjustment agreements or other means. But if those negotiations fail, then obviously, we'll revert to the litigation process I outlined at the beginning, the Commission on Local Government and the three-judge panel, pardon me. And so with that, that, I just wanted to give everybody an overview of the process of some of the issues that the county perceives with reversion and some of the concerns the county has about the negative impacts. And while mine is tops of the ways, I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Schalver now, who is going to provide information concerning the numbers and the impact. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anne Schalver, and I will be talking a little bit about some of the trends that we see, including really getting into the deep dive, I think someone said, regarding the numbers. So we're going to start by taking a look at community demographics for each of the city and the county. And what we see with Martinsville is a stable population. So I'll take a point at this slide, just to orient everyone. We're generally, with these slides that are upcoming, looking at 10 years of data from fiscal 10 through fiscal 19, typically, looking at data that is published in the annual financial report of the communities. And these slides will show a bar to indicate the data itself for each year, as well as a very light, it's a little bit hard to see, but a light dotted trend line to sort of indicate, over that 10-year period, what's the trend doing, or is it, is it up, is it down, what's it doing? So with this particular slide, we can see stability with Martinsville's population of just a little bit over 13,000. And then the same for the county as well, just been a little bit of a decline, but more stable here in recent years. School enrollment is something important to look at. As Mr. Carroll indicated, with reversion, the school division would be combined. And so we see a declining enrollment from the standpoint of the city of Martinsville. School enrollment as of fall of the 2020 school year at under 2,000. And when you see the linear, you can definitely see the decline shown here. This data does come from the Virginia Department of Education. Henry County's student enrollment is stable at right around 7,400. Next, we're going to take a look at just sort of the financial analysis first of the city. We will turn our attention to the impact on the county in a little bit, but we're going to start by looking at the city, and start with the high-level snapshot. So one of the important things that a community does in Virginia, or really anywhere in the United States, is to be able to impose a property tax on property owned by its citizens within its boundaries. So one of the things we want to take a look at is, well, what is the assessed value of that property that's subject to taxation? And so, again, we see a picture of this, of stable assessed value for the city in terms of 775 million in fiscal 19, which is basically fairly stable compared to the other years during this 10-year timeframe. When we look at assessed value, we're talking about real property, real estate, that's the biggest piece, but we're also talking about personal property, machinery and tools, and then properties that are owned by public service corporations, such as our utilities, again, both real property and personal property. One of the things that's a best practice for all local governments, state or local governments, is to have some money set aside in the bank, so to speak. And so we finance people refer to this with complicated terms that no one else would want to use. We call it unassigned fund balance. But what we really mean is, well, what does our savings account look like? Because when something terrible like COVID-19 comes along, local governments are looked upon to be able to provide services to citizens very quickly, so we need to have money in the bank to help do that. And so that's, that's just an indicator of financial health. In the case of Martinsville, we have graphed from fiscal 13 through 19 its unassigned fund balance, and also having a horizontal line to indicate Martinsville's own internal policy. So their policy says that they always want to have 10% of their annual budget sitting in the bank, if you will, in fund balance. And so what we see on this slide is that indeed, that has been met. In most cases, they have been above the 10% level, sometimes more like 12% to 13%, and in the most recently concluded fiscal year of 19, June 30th, 2019, they rested it at 11.7%. So we only see one year in this timeframe that fell below that policy amount. Another aspect that we want to take a look at is, when a community adopts a budget, it's going to hopefully have revenues that are adequate to cover all the expenditures that it intends to make during a fiscal year. Well, sometimes communities don't do that, but instead, they will pull some money out of that savings account, or out of the bank, if you will, in order to support its ongoing expenditures. And when communities do that a lot, that can be a sign of fiscal distress, if there's not enough revenue in a given year to support that year's activities, and instead, they're having to take money out of the bank, you know, that can be a sign of distress. So one of the things that we analyzed was the extent to which the city actually uses fund balance to fund its operations. And so what we see on this slide is, and again, this is looking at a 10-year history, while the city planned in adopting its budget, a median use of fund balance of about $1 million, a little bit over $1 million, as the city moved through its year, it added additional activities, and typically, its final budget was calling for use of fund balance of up to 1.8 million. Indeed, its actual use of fund balance has been only about $300,000 in the median. And so what, what that tells us, our conclusion from that, is that, is that the city is not nearly as reliant on its fund balance as, as it may represent at times, or as it, as it seems to be at the time that it adopts its budget. So we would rather create fund balance than use fund balance, so it's still a sign of slight fiscal distress to use fund balance at all, 300,000, but it's certainly way stronger to only use 300,000 of fund balance than the possible 1.8 million that was included within the budget. The city of Martinsville has four operations that are handled more along the lines of businesses, not, not quite in the typical government sense in terms of operating, you know, police, fire, public work services, but more in terms of a self-funding operation. And so those four are their electric utility, the water, the sewer, and the refuse collection operation. And again, trying to stay away from too much accounting speak, but from a financial perspective, they are, they are handled as enterprise funds. Sometimes we use the terminology of business-type activity. But what we wanted to look at here is, well, so how do those look? What kind of fiscal strength do they provide? And actually, they're, they're pretty strong. What we can see on the rightmost part of this slide for fiscal 19 is that those four funds combined had money in the bank, if you will, or net position, is the accounting term, of about $6.5 million. So, you know, pretty sizable portion of, of positive net position there from those four operations. Further, we looked specifically just at fiscal 19, the most recently audited and completed fiscal year, to see what did the performance look like for those four funds for just that one year? And we see that all four of them produced positive results, a surplus of revenues over expenditures. The electric and the sewer operations produced the highest level of net profit, if you will, but all four had positive results for the fiscal year. So we think that that's notable in looking at the city's overall fiscal condition. When we look back all the way to fiscal 10, we look at a 10-year history, we see, overall, we see a positive change in net position with some ups and downs. We do see some years where those enterprise funds suffered losses, but by and large, they had revenues greater than expenses, and in some cases, by sizable amounts. You see the $4 million increase in fiscal 12, and more than a $4 million increase in fiscal 17, followed by almost a $3 million increase in fiscal 19. So strong enterprise operations would be my conclusion. Taking a look at revenues, for local governments in Virginia, local taxes make up the largest part of general fund revenues, typically, 2/3 to 3/4 in total. So what this slide is doing is looking at all of the local taxes, and for local taxes only, what makes up those pieces of the pie? And so, again, typical of most local governments, about half of the local taxes are from the real personal property taxes that are, that are imposed on ownership of property. And there's a little bit of penalty interest that goes along there as well. There are three other sources of tax revenue that are also double-digit pieces of this pie. And again, this pie is just local taxes, so we're not looking at revenues from the state, for example, just the local taxes. The sales tax makes up 12%. The business license tax, which is short acronym, BPOL, BPOL, is the business license tax, that's 11%, and the meals tax is another 11%. And then there are some others that are smaller that you can see listed there as well. When we graph the property taxes over a 10-year period, we see stable to maybe slightly rising levels of revenues there, about $9.1 million in annual revenues produced by those property taxes. And that, again, includes the real estate, the personal property, the machinery and tools, as well as taxes on public service corporations. The sales and use tax, which you'll remember, had, was about 11%, 12%, I think 12% of the overall local taxes. We see what I would call modest growth here. When we look at the trend line, we certainly see a positive shape to that trend line. The sales and use tax produces a little over $2 million, and that growth over the 10-year period, the average growth, has been 2%. So, you know, we wouldn't call that robust growth, but it's solid. You know, 2% growth over the long haul of 10 years is pretty good growth in the sales tax. Business license tax has also averaged 2%. Now here, we see more up and down. With the sales tax, we saw more of a consistent rise. With the business license tax, we see more up and down, and so that, that can certainly relate to businesses' openings and closings and trends that may occur within certain industries. But I think it's notable, again, we've got, we've got fairly positive growth over a 10-year period at 2%. Meals tax has been very strong. Growth over the 10-year period of this roughly $2 million source of annual revenue has been almost 4%, so a real strong source there. Like most all communities in Virginia, the communication tax has been on the decline. This one has had an average decline of about 2% over that same 10-year period. This generates revenue of just shy of $800,000 a year. There has also been a decline of about 2% through the 10-year period on the utility tax revenues generated. That tax produces a little bit over $600,000 a year for the city, and that's going to include the taxes on electric service, natural gas, and water. So to the extent that there are banks inside city limits, there is a tax called the bank franchise tax that's imposed on a capital calculation of banks and the amounts held by banks. And this produces a fairly small amount of annual revenue, about $440,000 a year, but it's had very strong growth. So we see 7.5% growth here over that 10-year period that we're examining. So, you know, we really see a lot of taxes producing solid and sometimes even strong growth. The motor vehicle license tax produces a little bit above $300,000 annually, and the average annual growth over the 10-year period has been almost a half a percent. Now that we've taken a look at the revenue side of the house, I want to turn some attention to the expenditure side. And for this section that's upcoming, we're going to take a look at how Martinsville compares to all cities in Virginia, we're just going to take a quick, brief look at that, but most notably, we're going to compare against a benchmark set of cities with populations somewhere between half of Martinsville's and about 135% of Martinsville's. We wanted to have enough to compare to, that we were comparing to more than just one or two cities, and so there are seven in this group, Martinsville and six other. All of the information for this particular section of my presentation comes from the Commonwealth of Virginia's Auditor of comes from the Commonwealth of Virginia's Auditor of Public Accounts Department that does an annual cost report process for all communities in Virginia. And so this information is published, it's made available, and it produces a lot of per capita information to tell us about spending per citizen. And so that can be helpful information in comparing communities to one another. Now, when we pause and look at Martinsville versus all cities in Virginia, we quickly realize that Martinsville is quite a bit smaller than the average. And so this is the only slide you're going to see where I'm comparing all cities with Martinsville. Martinsville being in the yellow and all cities in the orange on this particular slide. The average population of Virginia cities is a little bit above 66,000. The median is almost 25,000. And so Martinsville being at around 13,000, of course, is much smaller than these. And so as we would expect, when we look at the cost per citizen, it costs a lot less per citizen for these big communities to provide services because they're just spreading those over a larger base of population. So in all categories of expenditure, we see that Martinsville's costs are higher than the all-cities average. So I spent just a little time looking at that and quickly said, we better find some benchmarks. So let's try and look at Martinsville versus cities more in line with its size. And so this slide is going to show you the list that we arrived at for purposes of benchmarking. And in parentheses at the bottom of the slide is reference to their population. So you can see we go all the way from Galax at about 6,600 up to Colonial Heights at 17.6. When we're looking at that band from 50% of Martinsville's size up to 135% of Martinsville's size. And there's not really any magic about the 50% and 135%, except I wanted to have a nice number of comparisons. So seven seemed like a good number. Okay, so this slide is looking at total expenditures. So what are we spending for every citizen in our boundaries, you know, on average? This is looking at only the fiscal 19 year, the most recently published year by the Auditor of Public Accounts. And what you can see is that Martinsville expenditures are basically in line with the comparators. If we rank them 1, 2, 3 through 7, Bristol's is the highest at about 5,400, and Martinsville's is fourth along that list. So a little bit below the halfway mark. Martinsville's spending per citizen at 46.13 is above the average of these cities, which is shown by that black line, which is almost $4,000. This slide is... So that was all spending for all categories. This is taking a look at each of the categories individually. And it's pretty busy, so I'm just going to give you a couple of highlights off this slide. We look at general government, which is basically administration and things like finance and human resources, what we would call a back office. Of course, judicial is our court area. Public safety would be police and fire and a few other functions. Public works would be things like our streets and our refuse collection, things of that nature. Health and human services, providing social services for citizens and other benefits in that arena. Education, of course, for all communities is basically the number one, the biggest expense. Parks and recreation services, and then community development. And so looking at the points that are shown there, a couple of things I'll highlight on this slide. Martinsville is the highest in per capita spending in two categories. That's judicial and community development. Martinsville is on the high end in, I think, three more categories: general government, public works, and health and human services. And then it's lowest in the group for parks and recreation. So, you know, what might we derive from this slide? I would say that probably because of Martinsville's tendency to be a little bit on the high end, you know, we would probably feel like Martinsville could have some opportunities to reduce costs in some places, to be more in line, or maybe lower in some areas. In the parks and recreation area, we would probably indicate that Martinsville may not be providing the amenities for its citizenry in the area of parks and rec that some of the comparator communities provide. Using the same benchmark communities, the next thing we looked at is long-term debt. You know, thinking that perhaps a community interested in reversion would be very strained from a debt perspective, maybe highly leveraged. And that is actually not what we conclude when we look further at the debt area. When we take a look at these same seven cities, the average amount of debt per person, debt per capita, debt per citizen, is about $5,900 as shown by the black line on this slide, the horizontal line. And we see that Martinsville, with the purple, is on the low end here at about $4,400 per capita debt. Bristol, again, is our highest. It's got more than $10,000 of debt per capita. But Martinsville's on the low side. And so that's outstanding principal amount of debt per citizen. This one is looking at how much are we spending on debt? Servicing debt, repaying debt, principal and interest payments, as a percent of the total spending we do on everything in our community. And so the all-city, all seven of these cities average was almost 8%, whereas Martinsville's spending on debt is only about 3.2%. So, again, they're not heavy laden with debt. There's not a high debt load when your debt as a percent of expenditures is only 3.2%. We see, you know, we can see a range here. Manassas Park all the way up at 17%, Bristol 8%. So a lot of communities will also have a policy about this. Most communities have a financial policy that indicates they don't want their spending on debt to be any more than 10% of their budget. So 10% is also kind of a good bellwether to go by with this area. So now I want to turn our attention to, well, what does all this mean for Henry County? If reversion indeed takes place, what is that going to look like for the county? What does that convert to for its citizens? What's the tax burden going to be for its citizens? So first, we're going to look at revenues. We'll look at both revenues and expenditures. We're going to start with revenues. The first one, first thing I'm going to talk about is when a city, in Virginia, cities and counties basically operate alongside each other, they're neighbors. The burdens on cities and counties are a little bit different. The services provided are slightly different. Say in the example of street maintenance, cities are responsible for street maintenance. In counties, VDOT generally handles it. But basically, they function side by side. So if we now have a town that's going to be inside a county, in what situations do the residents actually pay both the town and the county? And so it's this list that you see up on the slide here. For real estate, for personal property, for businesses that are subject to machinery and tools tax, and also for those public service corporations, those property owners, businesses, will be paying both the county and the town upon reversion. Now, the city has indicated that it's going to reduce tax rates from today to its future when it becomes a town. That's what they have said, that's what they've indicated. So hopefully, when these entities are paying both the city and, I mean, the town and the county, it will be at a lower town rate. But that is yet to be determined for certainty. So what I did to sort of analyze this and give us a better idea of, well, what might this look like for our county residents, I put together a number of charts that will look at current state and then future state under the town model. And so I'm going to walk us through this first one in detail, and then the others basically follow. So what we're going to see here for our real estate is going down the slide, we see an assessed value of the property that's subject to taxation. We see a tax rate for the communities. And then the assessed value multiplied by that tax rate, as applied to each $100 of assessed value, derives the taxes assessed. It's a mathematical multiplication, taxes assessed. So when we go from left to right across this particular slide, the first set is three columns. We're looking at the city, Martinsville City, beside Henry County. And then what does it look like when we put those two together, the combined? And then on the rightmost side of this slide, we look at the future potential state of Martinsville Town, Henry County, and combined. So I'm going to just walk us through this in a little bit of detail. So right now Martinsville City has about $631 million of assessed value real property. And so at its current tax rate of $1.621, that generates taxes of about $6.7 million. And each penny on the tax rate generates about $63,000. Henry County currently has about $2.9 billion of assessed value real property at a current tax rate of .555, generating revenues of $16 million in tax assessments, where each penny generates $288,000. Okay? And so when we combine those assessed values, that value on the top row, putting the two communities together, the combined assessed value is just over $3.5 billion. And the combined taxes assessed are $22.7 million. So when we move to the right and we look at the town column, the assessed value property hasn't changed. Still the same amount of real estate within that new town boundary. This is assuming no annexation yet, of course. So the $631 million is exactly what it looked like under the city scenario. But now when we look at Henry County, it has the larger assessed value of $3.5 billion because it's not only including its former value, but also the city's former value, and picking up the combined. Because now, instead of being side by side, the town is inside the county. And so when we start thinking about the tax rates, I want to walk us through that. My assumption in working up all of the numbers for this have been that a combined tax rate would be in place that was the same as the former city tax rate. So you see the $1.0621 as the combined tax rate. The county's tax rate, I'm assuming, is going to stay the same, for now, I'm assuming that, at .555. So that backs us into a new town tax rate of .5071. And you get that by taking the $1.621 and subtracting the county's tax rate of .555. So then when we have these tax rates and these assessed values, now we can derive the taxes to be assessed. About $3.2 million for the town, the new town, and about $19.5 million for the county, which now has a town inside of it. And so what that shows us is a shift in taxes assessed of $3,504,524 from the town to the county. Okay, so the county would get about $3.5 million, roughly, of additional real estate taxes under this scenario. Okay? So no assumed change in the tax rate right now. Just a shift in terms of the assessed value that now is added to the county's boundaries. And I also want to note that under the reversion scenario, each penny on the county tax rate is now going to generate about $351,000 of revenue. Each penny on the town tax rate generates the same $63,000 that it generated before. Okay? So, and I won't drag us through that on each additional slide, but the slides that follow look, basically, look at the other taxes. Okay? So I'll just hit a few high points for these others. This is looking at the real estate that's held by public service corporations. Again, typically utility companies. And so using the same model, about $135,000 would be added to the county's coffers and removed from what was previously the city's coffers, now town coffers. Each penny would create, on the tax rate, would create about another $21,000 of revenue for the county and about $2,400 for the town. This is personal property held by the same group of public service corporation entities. Not a whole lot of money here. About an $8,900 shift in revenue between the two communities and under $100 on each penny of the tax rate. Machinery and tools tax getting a little bit larger again. The shift in revenue between the two communities is about $104,000 if the town, if the city becomes a town. For Henry County, if it were to alter the machinery and tools tax rate, each penny generates about $36,000 and under $1,000 for the town. On the personal property, this is our vehicles that are owned by both businesses and individuals, residents, residential people. The shift in revenue between the two communities is about $1,007,000, a little bit above $1,007,000. And each penny on the tax rate here is roughly $53,000 for Henry County and about $11,000 for the city. Now, on both this personal property slide and on the machinery and tools slide, I do want to just add the quick caveat that if you really get into the weeds on these taxes, at least part of the taxes are computed based on the depreciated cost of the property that's being taxed. And the two communities use a different schedule of depreciation than one another. And so this is not precise, but it's probably a reasonable estimate for now. And we can get more precise as we move through this process, certainly. One thing I want to comment on just a little bit is what happens to our citizens when it comes to car tax relief if the city reverts and becomes town? And so unfortunately, that does have a negative impact on our Henry County residents because the car tax money that's doled out to localities is unchanged by reversion. The future town gets the same dollar amount that the city got, and the county gets the same dollar amount that it's always gotten. And so now the county would have to share its tax relief over a larger base of taxes. And so, you know, what's kind of, what's the bottom line to your typical vehicle owner? The bold second to the bottom point here tells us what that is. The typical vehicle that's subject to car tax relief, so not all vehicles are subject to car tax relief, and only the value under $20,000 is subject to tax relief. But the average is about $5,000. It's the average assessed value in both, actually in both the city and in the county, of the vehicle that gets tax relief. And so if the town reverts and the county citizen has to pay more, that county citizen owning a $5,000 vehicle is going to pay about $5.50 more per year. So not a significant impact. If it's a $10,000 vehicle, it's $11 more a year. If it's a $15,000 vehicle, it's $16.50 more a year. So that just kind of sizes it for our citizens. Obviously, a citizen on a very fixed income doesn't want to have to pay any more in property tax, but it's not too big of a burden by having the car tax relief shared over a larger population. The county will get more penalty and interest money by having more tax bills out there. The impact there is roughly $114,000 of increased revenue to the county. That's our projection. All of those that I just talked about are those examples of various taxes that will be imposed both on, for town residents, those are all taxes that will be imposed both by the county as well as by the town. This slide shows us a list of taxes that are imposed by either one locality or the other on any given transaction, but there's not an overlap. And so we'll use meals tax as an example because it's one we can all relate to. So if the city becomes a town, if we go and have a meal in a restaurant that's in the county, then we pay meals tax on that meal, and that goes to the county. If we go and have a meal in a restaurant that's in the town limits, inside town boundaries, we pay meals tax to that restaurant, and it ends up going to the town. And so these taxes should more or less behave the same way upon the city becoming a town as they do now. Except that, if annexation occurs, these are exactly the transactional-based taxes that the county would lose revenue on. So to the extent that... So to the extent that the county has a fair amount of revenue from these consumer-driven transactional-type taxes, it would be most concerned about the impact of annexation on its revenues. The other one I want to point out is that the sales and use tax distribution is different under a town model than a city model. Many of you probably know that if you go anywhere, you go to one of these big box retailers and you buy things, the sales tax is imposed. It is collected by the merchant, it goes to the Commonwealth, and then the Commonwealth sends it back to the local government on a monthly basis. Well, if there's a town model, instead of the sales taxes being, that are generated inside the town boundaries going to the town, there's a very different distribution model. And it's shown here on this slide. And basically, what happens is that the distribution occurs with a split that's based on school age population. And so, basically, everything's looked at at a combined level, and then the town gets half of its pro-rata share using the school age population. So when we use the most recent school age populations for Martinsville and for Henry County, which are available on the Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service website, we see that the county would actually pick up $1,285,000 in additional sales tax revenue because of this difference in formula under a town model. So Martinsville would have about 1.3 million less, and the county would pick up 1.3 million more. So certainly a positive component on the revenue snapshot for the county, should the city revert to town status. So I did a lot of number crunching at a detailed line item level of all the revenues to the county's, yes, to the county's general fund. What you see here is not line item level, but it's category level in terms of what would be the additional revenues to come to the county should the city revert to town status. And so, I'll just touch on the biggest of these. First of all, the general fund total is estimated at $10,736,000. Biggest piece of that, not surprisingly, is those general property taxes that we talked about in some detail, at 5.2 million. Sales tax that we just looked at, because of the change in formula, is also pretty big, at 1.3 million. And then, Mr. Carroll talked about how the constitutional officer offices themselves, and of course, the funding of those would be shifted under a reversion situation. And so that almost $3 million number that you see kind of close to the bottom of this list relates to the funding that would come to the county for all of the constitutional officers, sheriff, treasurer, commissioner of the revenue, clerk of court, and Commonwealth attorney, under this model. And then there's some others in here as well. So, the number we might want to hang on to is $10.7 million of additional revenues to the county following reversion, 10.7. And again, a reminder that if annexation, so that assumes no annexation, okay? That's just constant state. Should annexation occur, there would be loss of revenues, as listed on the last bullet on this slide, the utility tax, the meals tax, the lodging tax, basically all of these transactional, consumer sort of generated taxes. When we look at the services and the expenditures, and how would they shift around? Mr. Carroll covered the idea of, well, what's going to be provided by the town? What's going to be provided by the county? So this is just kind of a repeat of that. But what we're really going to get into is, well, what about the numbers? You know, what's the cost of that? And so, this is, and again, I looked at it pretty much department by department level when I did my analysis. And so this slide is going to summarize that for us at the categorical level. So, the biggest piece is going to be education. This is the increased burden to the county out of those tax revenues to fund the now combined educational system. Judicial administration and public safety are also fairly large. And then smaller impacts in health and welfare, general government, and community development. And so, punchline here is an increase of almost 14.1 million, right? And so what was that other number? A lot smaller, wouldn't it? Yeah. So, we'll get to, I'll get to the summary of those two in a minute. But a lot more expenditure than revenue that we expect to come over. Now, what I've quantified is what we know. What I have not quantified is listed on this slide, okay? So there's some additional expenditures that we would expect that we have not actually taken paper to pen to yet, probably will be, but not yet, in terms of really figuring out the expenditure impact to the county. And so those are things, again, Mr. Carroll covered a lot of this. Things like, well, do we have to make building changes? Are we going to have to look at salary? I mean, if employees come over to the county, and we now have a big group of employees, we're going to pay them on a comparable basis, or we're not going to have a different pay scale for city, former city versus county employees? So we've got to look at salary equalization. We've got to look specifically at the compensation board, constitutional office positions, that are all going to come over to the county. We are concerned about the impact on parks and recreation and refuse disposal of having town residents use the county services and the increased expense that that could pose to the county. And then, of course, there are one-time costs to merely go through the reversion process, the legal costs that are involved, costs for people like me to crunch all the numbers and do things like that. We don't know yet, because all of the details will still need to be undertaken about these regional organizations, but we do have to kind of keep a tickler. We don't know what's going to happen to the arrangement for funding of 911, of the library, economic development. Those could potentially bring about increased burdens financially to the county as well. So when we take a look at the revenues that are incremental, new revenues, to be added to the county's coffers, and we look at the expenditures, we see that there's unfortunately a deficit, fairly sizable deficit, of about 3.3 million. And again, recall that that does not include any of these potentials that were just on the last slide, and this also does not consider the long-term impact of any annexation. If we do the math on the 3.3 million, if we were solely to try to close that gap on the real estate, using the real estate tax, it would result in about a 10-cent additional tax to county residents. However, that's not the only way to close the gap. When we're, when we have a budgetary gap that we need to close, we can raise additional revenues, we can curtail our spending, or we can do a little bit of both. And so this slide is intended to provide a listing of the different options that seemed most logical in terms of closing the gap that we see on this prior slide. So we've got to have a balanced budget, that's required in Virginia. And so, how do we get there if we have a 3 million-plus gap? Real estate generates $351,000 per penny. The prepared food and beverage tax, also called the meals tax, generates about $600,000 for every percent. One of the things we like about that is that visitors pay that, not just our residents. Motor vehicle license tax, for every additional dollar in that tax rate, it's $54,000 in revenue generated. The cigarette tax is an option for the county. We do not know the revenues that that would generate, because the county does not have a cigarette tax in place now. On the expenditure side, if we, for every 1% of expenditures that we could cut, we would save about $141,000. And certainly, by all means, as the city, to become a town, and the county, start working through this process, and if negotiation is the spirit of the parties, then I think, you know, some working teams could get together to try to brainstorm and find some ways to create efficiencies by having, you know, a larger county operation providing services to the larger base of citizenry. Just for comparison, for information purposes, included a couple of slides in here on the comparative rate for real estate tax. These actually come from the county's budget document. And so you can see that at 55.5 cents on the real estate, the county is on, you know, kind of in the middle of the pack here with the surrounding jurisdictions and comparators that it's used in its budget process. There are, there are some that are higher, notably those cities. In terms of the counties that are included, I'd say Henry County's about in the middle. And then included the same on the motor vehicle license. Again, that one doesn't generate as much in terms of revenue for each dollar, but the county is on the low side on this one, and so there is the potential to increase the motor vehicle license as a way to raise its revenues. The analysis that you've seen so far is focusing only on the general fund. Maybe just to put my finance hat on for just a moment, local governments and schools financially are reported separately from one another. Schools are fairly independent financially, and they are reported as their own entity in financial statements. The role is that the local governments have to support those schools. The schools can't levy a tax, and the schools can't issue debt for school buildings and things like that. So there's a, there's a relationship whereby the local government is funding the school division. Typically, about half the school division's revenue is going to come from the local government, and about the other half from the state. And so we did, on all these previous slides, we focused only on the county and its general fund. And of course, part of that being that the county now has this bigger school operation to fund. So you might remember that was about a $6 million increase in the county's expenditure burden. What this slide is doing is looking at the school operation, and what would be the additional revenues if there's no longer a Martinsville school division, and it's all Henry County, a larger Henry County, what does that look like? So we have about $22.4 million in additional school fund revenues. The expenditure computation came in at about $21.2 million. So on the school side alone, it actually projects a surplus that you can see here of about 1.2 million. However, I feel that I would need to caution county officials from thinking that that 1.2 million can help close that $3.3 million gap, because, you know, I just think we probably need to work through the process, see what's involved on the salary piece with the school operations and other aspects before we necessarily, you know, could count on this. So, from my perspective, I've kept the general fund and the school fund basically separated from each other, and when I project this $3.3 million deficit, it is just looking at the general fund. You know, when we talk schools, another thing I should just briefly touch on, too, as far as, well, what's in these numbers, what's not? Mr. Carroll talked earlier about properties and outstanding debt. And, you know, certainly, there could be properties that would come over to the county that have debt on them. And while the county would probably much prefer that the town continue servicing that debt, that's going to be, remain to be seen through the negotiation process. None of my expenditure estimates have incorporated anything for additional debt service by the county taking over any town debt, okay? So if that were to occur, that's going to further widen the gap, if you will. And that concludes my and Mr. Carroll's presentation. And we would, I guess, go sit down and turn it over to the county officials for any further discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you both for the presentation. And I'm going to ask Mr. Hall if he will briefly summarize some things that maybe we can take away from this, because it would be impossible to address every single slide. Well, maybe not impossible, but quite lengthy. But, Mr. Hall, will you address some things that we can take away? And maybe a going-forward direction for the board as it chooses to maybe have questions in regard to this?
First of all, I think we need to thank Ms. Schaubert and Mr. Carroll for incredibly well-done and in-depth presentation. There's a lot in here to digest, both from staff's standpoint as well as the board's standpoint. Couple of takeaways I had from sitting in the back watching it. I think the expectation on the city's part that this whole process would only result in a 5-cent increase on the real estate tax for county residents, I think that is optimistic. The numbers shown by Mr. Carroll and Ms. Schaubert show it's probably only closer to 10 cents instead of 5. And there are a host of unknowns as to what the city would relinquish and as to what we would be forced to take, which all have associated costs with them, and we have no idea yet what those costs would be. And really, you know, the ultimate goal, I believe, as it usually is in any reversion, is not necessarily reversion, it's the annexation that followed. And we have no idea how to capture those costs yet. So, I think, within the presentation, we see that there's going to be a substantial impact, financial impact on county residents. We know that's coming. We have no idea the depth of that yet, because there's still so many unknowns. I think logically, we can assume that the costs shifting to us will be much more substantial than perhaps some folks have been saying, I think. So I think it's, you know, it's the board's decision as to where to go with this. I'm sure that we all need some time to evaluate these numbers and truly get around them. And, you know, based on the board's inputs, we'll see what the next couple looks like.
Board members, takeaway or comments at this point?
Well, since we're looking at this for the first time tonight, it's a lot to absorb. I mean, it's a lot to take into consideration, particularly the numbers that have been presented to us. So I think it'd be a little bit early to even start to analyze it until we go through it all.
And I think, too, it's, you know, it's an in-depth study, you know? I mean, it gives you a good overview of how things will probably look, you know, if the city wants to revert to a town. But there's still a whole lot of unanswered questions that Mr. Hall has just said that we have got to look into. Because we, the annexation of the whole process, and I myself personally think that one of the biggest reasons that the city wants to revert to a town is the annexation for properties outside city limits. And we just don't, we don't know what they want, how to calculate what they want, you know? So it's just so much unanswered questions right now. But, you know, I thank you all very much for the presenting what you've come up with so far, and we'll just have to wait and see, you know? Hopefully, when you all meet with the city at a design date, that some of these problems may be worked out. You know, we just don't know until that happens.
I think that, for me, there are so many unknowns still, but there were some knowns that were presented tonight that piqued my interest. And those were, first, the vitality of the city in terms of their finances, and their use of fund balance. That was interesting information for me.
Others? I get the sense that, Tom?
All right, I'm like, Dr. Martin, I think they put out that they're going to use a lot of it, but then they don't use as much as they advertise, and that was kind of eye-opening for me, so, but we'll just have to see.
Mr. Zaire?
No, no comment yet.
Well, I get the sense from everyone that you want time to absorb and look into this, Well, I get the sense from everyone that you want time to absorb and look into this, and I'm sure as you have questions, you can either pass through to Mr. Hall, who in turn maybe can direct Jeremy or Andy, the one, to further dig if we need. Very good presentation. I do want to note that I'm happy to see that we have members of the media that stay for the duration. I realize this is long and dry to go through, but Henry County Enterprise, Martinville Walton, BTW, and Star News, thank you all for being here and helping to us get the word out as to where we think this impact will be. With that, in sensing that you all want time to absorb, I will entertain a motion for Jeremy.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is 6-0. I, Jennifer, everyone?